Crime scenes. Risk crime scenes, becoming a fingerprint recognition expert, has abated hundreds of nuisance vehicles, rescued countless animals, issued parking citations, administered our dog license program, and has been a backup 911 dispatcher in times of need. Carrie's declaration has been recognized several times by the chief of police, who has given her standing ovation awards. She's a former recipient of the City of Qatadi's Excellence Award, and she was recognized this year by the Rona Park Qatadi Rotary Club as the Qatadi Police Department's Commitment to Community Person of the Year. That is a lot of things, and again, in that 30-year career, which is not over, by the way. No, all right. Just want to be clear on that part of it, too. I already challenged you, remember? Before the meeting, I worked 36 years and just retired five months ago, so you've got at least six more years to go. That's what I'm saying. Anyway, with that, Carrie, why don't you come up to the podium? I didn't want to embarrass you through all that, but now we're going to embarrass you kind of at a separate level, and see if there's any comments from councilmember. I can start with Councilmember Moore.
Since I moved here in 1984, any of the comments or concerns that I've heard regarding our community service officer and you, Carrie, have always been positive, professional. You've always done an outstanding job, and I commend you for your service for all these years. Very nice.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I think John did a very good job of summarizing everything that you've done. I like seeing you out in the community. I have seen you out in the community. As was pointed out by the chief, you take it very personally, the pets in our community. And I know I have been recipient of your cards in the past, and that makes people feel good about their community. So it's a little bit extra that you do, and it's those little things that make Qatadi a special community. And thank you for being here this long and making Qatadi special.
All right, thank you for those words. Councilmember Landman.
Well, Carrie, 30 years, it goes so very quickly. I do have to say, when I listen to the description, and I thought I knew everything you did, and I realize now I don't, and I still bet we didn't cover half of what you actually do for this organization. So I'll say, since it seems like you do almost everything behind the scenes, I know it would be very difficult, at 37 years, at 36 years and one month, when you pull the plug, to replace that. But I want to thank you for it. And particularly, I'll note the sympathy cards. That's not something that came with the job. That's something that came from you, and it's a reflection of you as a person. And I thank you for that. I think it reflects really well, and it probably showed all of us how to do a better way of doing this. So thank you for being with, being such an important part of us for so long, and helping the city grow to where it is now. I think, honestly, I can say we couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you for that, Mark. And Vice Mayor Skilman.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the majority of my interactions have been related to lost pets and licensing and all of that aspect, so it's amazing to see that's just the tip of the iceberg. So that's wonderful to see everything that you've done. And I think most surprisingly is that we were hiring people at 14. I mean, that's amazing. So, you know, outstanding teenager, look at that. So anyway, just, I mean, honestly, want to thank you for all of your years of service. It's just, it's amazing, and it really is such an integral part to be the face that people see when they're in their time of most desperate need. So thank you very much.
I'm kind of speechless when the vice mayor takes the best joke of the night, and I don't get to offer it up. It's really kind of a shock for me. But, you know, at this point, Carrie, before we have something we want to present to you, and we'll do our traditional group photo, I want to give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to say a few words. Now would be a great time.
I've enjoyed my career, and I've had ups and downs. And it's all through that, because of my family, who's been supportive and there for me, my parents, and my family, my best friends, and then my work family here. And right now, if you live in Qatadi, it's the best place to be, because you've got great dispatchers answering the phone, and you have great officers. And we have, in all of the times that, you know, many people, and we've always had good times, and this is probably one of the best times. And I've just been fortunate to work with a great group of people. And so in the days that haven't been good, I've had a great, loving support of my family, who have helped me through the difficult times. But I still enjoy it every day. I enjoy walking through that door, and until I don't, one of the guys gave you a perfect example, I'm one bad day away. And I think it's good, but I've got a ways to go, because I still really enjoy coming to work in the variety of things I do. I enjoy it.
That's great. No, it's very, very nice to hear those kinds of words coming out from staff. And I went around, and as you know, you know, I met with, in the last month, met with all the different departments, just to do kind of a check-in as the mayor. And that was the underlying theme with every department, was however long somebody's been here, whether it's months or it's been many years, everybody, I mean, to the person that told me this, said, you know, "This is like the best staff that we've had." And it really is. I mean, we can see it at a different level here, as, not only as council members, but as citizens who live here. So thank you for all that work.
Morale, you know, morale's good. It's like there's a connection, and it's a family connection. And that's what makes it enjoyable every day.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I can't top that speech, so with that, we're going to come around and do a lovely photo. If you want to pull your folks into the photo, that'd be great. And like we often do when we have special presentations, so we know that this is a school night, so if any of you need to leave and not stay for the whole meeting, you can do so. It is? Oh, I hadn't heard, okay. All right, with that, we're going to move now on to item seven, which is approval of final agenda. We have any changes, city manager?
No proposed changes.
No changes, very good. And now, we're at item eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, do we have anyone to speak? Ms. Alderman, we'll start with you. That's not on right now. Yeah, I noticed it's not on. It is on?
It's on.
It's on. Okay, then. Why don't we take a five-minute pause and see if we can fix this? And I will close that for now. Podium?
Don't whack it.
Don't whack it, yeah. Be gentle, because it'll be really noisy. It should be on.
Okay. Can you hear me now, George? For one thing, this was important, because you already have a civil suit on 80/80s discrimination, and that was in federal court right now. And for you guys to behave like you just did again, that's not going to fly with the judge, thank you. If you didn't notice that, also, the people out there can probably hear, couldn't hear, so it was important we're on the thing. If you didn't notice, there's like an emergency outside, and the city of Qatadi has done basically nothing like you did two years ago. We may still have power here in Qatadi, but Rona Park and Santa Rosa are likely to go out. Schools are closed, and we don't even know if the city of Qatadi has a, has a generate. The generate, we don't know if they have generator. You should be opening it. We are not an island in this. We, so how about people with medical needs? That, the community center should be open. There should be specific plans, and they're not happening. And you guys need to really get your act together. You proved your worth two years ago, and you're proving it again now. I, you weren't sending out nixels, and then they were copycats of every other one. There's no specific information in what you're sending out. People are going to gas stations, and there, there's lines at gas stations, targets out of stuff, you know. You guys need to show some leadership when these things happen, not sit and just pretend like it's a normal council meeting. Thank you.
Did you have any comments on consent item? The community events, farmers markets, downtown shopping stroll, again. Okay, thank you for that. And just as a very quick follow-up, I know that city staff has been involved with the county in meetings all day on the emergency operations center. So there's been a lot of activity that's been going on here in City Hall to prepare for something that will probably not hit the bulk of the city, but just in case, you still need to prepare for it. Okay, anyone else? You know, I know I saw it. And it, well, no, please come up. No, I saw it, and... It's here in a pile of papers, so if you just please proceed.
How do you get organized, you're mayor.
If you'd like to proceed, now's the time.
I filled out a speaker card, because you've asked us to fill out a speaker card. Would you please read the speaker card, mayor?
George, you've got less than...
Is that a knowing, mayor? You're not qualified to read the speaker card? Is this confusing for you? Can I, should I go a little slower? Can you find the speaker card? Because if you do this to me, you're going to do this to everybody else. You're going to play politics with everybody else that you disagree with. So will you please find the speaker card that I filled out for your convenience?
You have less than two and a half minutes.
Yes or no, sir?
No, I'm not going to...
No, thank you. Okay, now let's start my time.
No, no, no.
No, yes, yes, yes. And please don't interrupt. I have three minutes. Please don't interrupt, okay? Please.
You stop talking right now.
Please, sir.
Stop talking.
Please, you're interrupting me. Do I have three minutes to speak? Are you going to refuse me my right, my First Amendment rights to speak here, sir?
Your First Amendment rights started a minute ago. It's up to you to take advantage of it.
Sir, will you please be quiet and stop interrupting?
You have two minutes left.
Will you please be quiet?
Your microphone will be cut off.
Stop interrupting me, please. All right? Behave yourself. I am Councilman George Berich. I'm here to speak tonight. Mayor, if you cannot read the speaker cards, it's time that you pass the gavel on to somebody who can. You have no right to decide what citizens are to be called, what citizens are not to be called. You do not have that right. We're paying for these proceedings tonight, mayor. I was elected to public office, and I served with honor and distinction. You, sir, were appointed to that seat because you're a brown-noser and a clown. I'm asking you to grow up, abide by the Qatadi's code of conduct, let go of the hate, let go of the animosity, stop playing these childish games, stop playing politics, because I think you look jealous in front of the public. And it's not becoming of you. I understand that you're pissed off that I'm about to file a federal complaint against you and the city of Qatadi. I get it. I get it that you're sensitive, that there's blood in your veins. I get it. But it's not my fault that you don't know what you're doing in that seat that you're sitting in. Now, the recall in 2009 only proved that you Democrats cannot work with other people that you disagree with, other people on the other side of the aisle, that you are so thin-skinned and have such small egos that you cannot handle healthy debate. You ignore the Qatadi's code of conduct? What an insult to former mayor Bob Coleman, who wanted that code of conduct to have some meat.
You please need to wind down.
He wanted so badly to get rid of the pledge of allegiance, and he failed miserably. So anyway, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight for another meeting of the Communist Politburo of Qatadi.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hancock, you had your hand up.
Yes, good evening. I feel like I need Arma to come up here. Last time I spoke on the pedestrian and bicycle plan, I was almost planted. So I'm talking about this evening, again, pedestrian safety in Qatadi. And so I'm advocating, if I can, for an update to the Qatadi bicycle and pedestrian master plan. This is something that has been very well done in the past. How close am I? Pretty close there. Thank you very much. So we, I sent through an email earlier with some maps, just to kind of indicate what the, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous with this whole atmosphere that is generated in here. It's a very difficult process to come up. So it would be nice to have a vision for our pedestrian safety along the northwest corner. We have Highway 116, and it's an emerging area. It's an area that we've got in Qatadi that we're looking at, and is evolving in terms of the number of businesses and residential usages that are going along there. I think it would benefit if we could actually redo our Qatadi bicycle, pedestrian, and management plan for that area, as currently, it's a little bit out of synchronization with the general plan. We've had the 2014 BMP, first edition, that was fantastically good. I know there's been a number of people that actually got involved in it, and there's been some very good effort at capturing for most of Qatadi the core bicycle and pedestrian status and the projects that came from it. However, it's out of sync with the 2015 general plan. So the general plan came along, and in that area, there was a number of changes. In particular, we had some reformatting, proposed reformatting of roads, and we don't really align up at the moment with those roads. The legislature has identified that the number of deaths in California, pedestrian deaths in California, was 867 in 2016. And similarly, there was a lot of road deaths as well, but particularly the pedestrian deaths are 30% above the national average. So we currently have SB 127, Active Transportation in California Streets, that's going to prioritize the implementation of safe and connected facilities for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users on all state highway operations and protected program projects. So California, Caltrans District Four has the direction to do better for safety, and states they will work with areas that declare themselves lead agencies. Qatati is declaring itself a lead agency in these areas.
Mr. Hancock, I'm going to ask you to kind of wind down too here, please.
Last sentence, thank you. But we in Qatati need to have the plan for pedestrian connectivity along Highway 116 to be able to work with Caltrans. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any topic? Yes, Irene. You don't have to run. Clock doesn't start till you get up here.
I'm not up here to throw anybody under the bus, but I have one complaint. As a copy editor, as a reporter, as a photographer, why do you guys take pictures behind this podium?
We're not very bright, apparently.
Either push this out of the way or come to the front. I will not take a picture when you guys stand back there. I just won't do it, because I don't need this in the paper.
That's a good point.
Okay. Like I say, I'm not up here to, it's known, I just have a complaint. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we are moving on to the consent calendar, item nine. We have one item.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Nope, seeing none, and there was no one who addressed it under that previous section in Citizens Business, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Please show a 5-0 vote on that. And item 10 is direction on future agenda items. Is there anyone tonight who has any items for future agendas? Not seen anyone?
The only thing I would suggest is we look at the bicycle pedestrian plan update for future agenda items.
Yes, and, um, does staff have like a 10-second update on that? Because I think it's, something's in the mix.
Sure, so, uh, community of the staff has been working with SETA. Given that we're a small community, we tend to rely on SETA, the Southern County Transportation Authority, to do a regional plan, uh, which implements individual elements for the smaller communities, and we generally adopt, uh, or slightly modify, and then adopt the regional plan for, uh, the elements that apply to Qatati. As was pointed out, that plan was drafted in 2014, last, and we adopted the general plan in 2015, so, um, they are out of sync in that, the general plan has been updated more recently than that. The staff is working with them, and we do plan to bring forward an update. I do not have a timeline, but I will by once in council, once in city.
Okay, great, thank you for that. So we'll be on a future agenda then. All right, we are now then at item 11, which is our regular agenda, and the first item is the 2019 California Building Code update and ordinance that is attached to it. And I'll turn that over to Noah.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and, uh, just continuing on the theme of this evening, uh, Michael Whitaker's been serving as the city's building official, uh, excellent staff, uh, he's been building official for numerous committees, uh, and he's doing this part-time for us. This is his last week, uh, unfortunately, and so, uh, this is kind of a, an excellent ending for Michael's time with the city, uh, and then he's helping us to bring forward the 2019 Building Code update. I bet I'm going to turn it over to Michael Whitaker.
Okay, thanks, Noah. For a quick little summary, um, the international codes are adopted a year ahead of us. We've got an international building code, international planning code, international budget code, et cetera, et cetera. California takes those codes and they amend them through the Division of the State Architect and the Oshkoshan, the State Bon Marshall, and we get a California Code of Regulations Title 24, which is a volume of like 11 different codes. It covers a section on your shelf that's about this wide. So, it's, you have a lot of codes. On January, they're, they're published on July 1st of, uh, 2019. There's a 2018 International Codes. California abends them, and California publishes that on July 1st of 2019, and they become code in all the jurisdictions in California on January 1st, uh, next year. That would be all the 2019 California Code of regulations, California Code, et cetera, et cetera. They include the California Building Code, California Building Code, et cetera, et cetera. Do, all the jurisdictions go through a, a local ordinance in order to adopt these?
Mike, I'm sorry, you're going to make something.
Hold that, okay. Is that better? Okay, all right. All of the local jurisdictions go through a process of, of creating an adoption ordinance, which basically adopts the California codes into your city code, and it allows you to do amendments to it, and allows you to adopt appendices to it, which, uh, which is what your ordinance basically is doing. And I wrote that, I basically took your last code and modified it, your, your last adoption ordinance and modified it. I also attended a meeting with the Redwood Empire Association of Code Officials, which includes all the jurisdictions in this area. In early September, there was a general discussion among all the, the code officials, which included me, on who was adopting what, what kind of appendices, what kind of codes people were adopting, how they were doing amendments. And your ordinance is pretty consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing in this area, so you're not standing out as any kind of odd character in how you're adopting your codes, okay? Let's see, we can do a page down. Okay, so, you know, um, general direction, significant changes to the CBC. In general, the California Building Code has some basic modifications that are technical and, and more in the way of administrative changes that just make it easier to, to read and easier to follow. There were some, um, specific ones I can throw out there, greenhouse gas classification, uh, greenhouse, greenhouses and their occupancy classification, beg your pardon. They are now more specifically classified according to how their, what their occupancy is. It, it helps in determining how to enforce the building code on what the occupancy classification is. And you can go up to 9,000 square feet on an unsprinkled building, that's a, that's a greenhouse, you know? Garage door openings now have a maximum opening of an eighth of an inch, um, in order to prevent embers from entering in a garage. In some of the, these are pretty specific, but I'm just giving you some examples. You now have, in conventional wood framing, you can now do a, a single header, which, for instance, if you had a wall that's two-by-sixes, normally you would put a, a, a six-by header across that, and it, it takes up a lot of wood space, um, takes up a lot of space in the wall, and there's a, really a movement towards doing wood framing that minimizes the amount of wood in, in, in the framing. And this allows you to have one header across there, and it fills in the rest of it with insulation, so it is, in effect, creating a, a better house for, for being insulated better. There's also something on habitable addicts that have to have emergency egress. Your local amendments, you, you have a, a number of appendices that, that we're adopting, it's pretty much consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing around you. They actually help you as far as being able to identify some extra codes, which give you a little bit better regulation on them, and also, some of them, uh, give the public and builders a, a different avenue for how to obtain approval of their projects through some additional codes. And one of them would be example in the, in the plumbing code, there are some appendices which allow you to, to modify how you calculate your water pipe sizing. One of the changes that's happened over time that the plumbing code has not kept up with is that you have all these low-flow fixtures. Well, the piping is still large for, for that situation, and, um, I went to a seminar a while back in which the fellow who was doing water heaters, and he was complaining that you have a huge loss of, of heat through water piping, which is too large for, for the fixtures that you have, and they're really a recommendation to have smaller pipe size that go to your plumbing fixtures for hot water, because you, you only have so much that can go through the fixture anyway, because you're limited by your, by your green building and by your plumbing code to begin with. There's also one in, on PEX. There's a PEX amendment in the plumbing code, which, uh, almost all the contractors around here that are, that are doing, uh, construction for plumbing, they're using PEX. Copper is kind of a, an old material now, and PEX is easier to install, um, and it's, uh, these standards give you specifications for how it's supposed to be installed. What are some of your other, uh, appendices? Well, you also are adopting the Property Maintenance Code, it's an international code. It's one of the few codes that California did not amend, but it actually, when I was a building official at the city of Santa Rosa, we looked at it fairly closely as an adoption mechanism to help your code enforcement to be able to identify some standards, some minimum standards for property maintenance, and I think it really does help your jurisdiction to be able to do that. And there are a number of jurisdictions around here that do adopt the Property Maintenance Code. It's not a California code, so you have to amend it by stating that all of the codes that it references are the California codes and not the international codes. Your fire code updates. What, the, the, your, your, your fire prevention officers in this area, they get together in the summer, as the codes come out, and they discuss what kind of adoption they want and what kind of amendments they want to do to your, to your, to your building codes. They've typically increased the number of buildings that are required to be sprinkled, um, that's, and all the jurisdictions do that. They do that through a mechanism where they add a new definition, they add a few new definitions in the building code, substantial improvement, uh, substantial additions for residential, substantial addition for non-residential. And for non-residential, if you do an addition of more than 25% of the building, uh, for residential, it's 50% of the building, so if you do an addition of more than 50% of the building, you're required to sprinkler the entire building now. That's not in your normal building code, that's an amendment that's done in this area, specific to this area, and it's been done for a number of code cycle changes in a row now. Sometimes it hits your tenant improvements kind of hard, because it's also a remodel addition, uh, substantial remodel is included in there also. So you could have a, a tenant space that's going through a major tenant improvement, and they end up having to sprinkle the building, which means they got to bring a new water lateral, and it, and it can add it to some substantial cost in that project. Let's go to the next slide. Oh, we're a little ahead of that, okay. Your energy code, um, your energy code is one of the codes that, that has the major changes in it, and it, they're major changes every three years in the energy code. And this year, um, you, there, are you familiar with HERS, HERS testers? There, there are special inspectors that you're, you're, on a single-family home, let's say, you have a building inspector that goes out and does a lot of the inspections. However, there's a, a, a special inspector that's approved by the, by the state, who comes in and does testing specifically for energy compliance. One of the things that they do typically is they test the ducts in a, in a, in a forced air system to make sure there's a, a maximum amount of, of air leakage in the ducts. Whenever you have a furnace replacement in a house, now, in an existing house, you also have to have duct testing, so that's one of the major things that I do as a building inspector when we have a, a permit for a furnace, is that I have to have a report from the HERS tester that they've passed a duct test. That tends to be the most important part of the inspection process, quite frankly. In the coming cycle, you have an additional HERS test that's required, it's called a quality insulation inspection, and it's a major jump in the energy code. It's going to be a fairly significant cost increase also, in that, uh, from what I've been told, is that a lot of the insulators, because they're going to be basically nitpicked by a HERS guy on how this insulation is put in, so there's some very specific items about how they do the insulation, how they have to caulk a lot of the openings, it, it basically seals up the building even more than it already is, but the insulators are already talking about increasing the cost of their insulation installations, because they've got to be able to pass this quality insulation inspection, of which you also have to pay the special inspector to do that inspection. So you have a, kind of a double whammy on that. There's also, in the energy code, there's a, a rating increase on your, on your furnace filters that goes up to a MERV 13, which increases the air quality inside your building, because it's going through a filter that is that much more tight as far as keeping dust down. And there's also going to be a test on the kitchen exhaust hood, that it has a minimum 100 CFM, and that somebody has to come in and test that, you know? So those are significant changes in your energy code as far as HERS testing, but the biggest energy code is that all new single-family homes with few exceptions are going to be required to have solar photovoltaic systems on their roofs. That is an energy code update that comes in this cycle. They're already talking about that, uh, creating a huge increase in, um, in the cost reductions for, for energy consumption, and it, that also creates a huge reduction in greenhouse gases in general throughout the state. The city of Qatati is kind of built out, I mean, you have some, you have a subdivision going on right now, however, they're talking about applying for all of their housing permits before the end of the year, which means they're on the present code, and this new code will not apply to them. So you're going to have some infill projects here and there, if you have another subdivision, then all the houses will, will apply to that. You have some multifamily homes that are, that are in your pipeline also, and the new code will apply to those, but some of these codes are going to be not that significant for the city of Qatati, just because you don't have that many new homes going in. Let's see, there are some significant increases in the lighting requirements for non-residential, it's in the new code, primarily because they're, they're really forcing non-residential occupancies to go to LED on a lot of their lighting, which, as we all know, is, is a major cost reduction for, for that. One of the other energy code updates is that there's going to be a tighter control over the sizing of the HVAC systems and the size of the ducts, there's a, um, a manual that, local jurisdictions are supposed to make sure that when they get an application, that they have this, um, means for determining the size of the system. Let's see, greenhouse and green building, you, we have, we're doing it like most of the other jurisdictions in this area, you do a green building standards code, and you also have a couple of appendices in them that you can go to tier one for, which is an additional requirements for green building, uh, for not, for residential, and you also have that for non-residential. There's five different categories within that. One of them is energy. You cannot do the energy for tier one, because it requires a cost-effectiveness study, which no one has done, but you already have a significant increase in your energy code. So you, you're green building, you have the mandatory requirements across the board for all the categories, including energy, which basically just says comply with the energy code, and then you have a tier one for new buildings, uh, for additional items. When you go to tier one, what it does is it, it, there's a whole list of, of items in each one of these categories, in which you have to do one or two different electives in the process for, for adding to your green building compliance. That's what tier one does for you. There's also a tier two, but nobody in this, in, in the state is doing tier two, it's very restrictive. Basic green building, you have an increase in the electric vehicle parking requirements for multifamily in particular, it's going to go up to 10% of the parking has got to be designated for electric vehicle. And the other one that was kind of interesting is if you have a- And the other one that was kind of interesting is if you have reclaimed water in your municipal water system, which I don't know if you do, do you have reclaimed water in your system at all? No? Okay, doesn't apply to you. But if you're within 200 feet of reclaimed water, you have to connect to it. You don't have an option to it in the new green building code. So with that, this is your first, this is not your first reading of it. This is just a presentation of what your code changes are. And if you have any questions to that, I'd be glad to accommodate that.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Appreciate it. Do we have any questions at this, from this end of the table, not at this point and in this direction? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Landman?
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Whitaker, in reading this back and I was struck thinking, okay, this is just a best practices update in what looks like a really complex industry. And now, after listening to you, I think it's 10 times more complex, but I feel very good about the expertise you've brought to and brought for us. So I had one general question and one that just came up from your last comment. And I wonder if I could get you to speak a little on the fire code process. This is basically done with the local fire departments and districts getting together, looking at the upgrades they want for a fire code. So basically, all the cities, including us, work in concert with them, for example, us with our local Rancho Adobe Fire, to bring in their required or recommended edits?
Yes, that's basically what happens. Rancho Adobe has pretty much been involved in the process with all the other fire prevention officers in the area. And basically, what I've done, when I did the code adoption ordinance for the city of Santa Rosa, I had a full-on fire department that gave me all of their amendments, okay? So I didn't have to do it. This time, I was required to do it and what I did is I just took, I had a copy of the city of Santa Rosa's ordinance and I took everything that, there's a fellow up there by the name of Ian, and I don't remember Ian's last name, but he's the, he's their head fire prevention guy, I think he's the fire marshal. And he is, he's kind of the lead guy in the whole area as far as putting the amendments together. And I basically took his verbiage and rolled it into your code.
I would just add, we referred Michael's draft to Rancho Adobe for their comments and they had no additional revisions requested.
Good, because well, that's good to hear. Usually, Santa Rosa is pretty thorough, often a best practice and could probably be encompassing everything and seeing what's in the same region. I think that's great to hear. So I just wanted to hear that.
Right. You're consistent throughout the whole county and all the jurisdictions on your fire code amendments.
Which is ideal. That's what you really want to see. Just last comment, this must be coming, something coming from Southern California, but you mentioned if somebody is within a certain number of feet of reclaimed water, they absolutely have to connect to it. We're talking reclaimed water and you have to use it not just for, for any use, basically. This is your water supply, basically, if it's there.
I don't believe it's full-on for potable water as such. I think it's more for landscaping irrigation.
Good. That's what I was hoping to hear because you horrified me for a moment and...
Yeah.
Usually, things change for the better, even if there's some difficulty, but that one worried me a little, so thank you very much.
Understand.
Absolutely. No further questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Ms. Alderman?
I do, I, oh.
Oh yeah, sorry about that.
I forgot that.
I do think he did a very good job of updating the building code. I learned the building code very well when you ignored it for 16 months next door after the explosions and fires and you allowed hazmat level fire debris into the city storm ones. And we didn't see building officials or anybody. We didn't have, they never red-tagged, they never did anything for those times. And then, it's a matter of enforcing what you have on the books. I learned those building codes, California building codes, because you guys refused to enforce them. And then you enforce things like, I had a reinspection of a reinspection of a reinspection of a reinspection of a fire repair that was built up to code because it was a selective, the neighbors were basically terrorizing us, but you guys went along. This is the kind of stuff that goes on in Catanis, not this, this stuff on the books. You need to really start enforcing, doing fairly. Everybody knows you selectively enforce and it's made it up to the federal court. That's part of my civil lawsuit. December 24th, 1:30 PM, Oakland Courthouse.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, oh no, sorry, Mr. Hancock. Sorry. Spinning circles.
Yes, good evening, counsel. I appreciate the update on particularly the fire code and I'm wondering whether or not there isn't something that could be made more available for homeowners in terms of the improvements, particularly what are the simple areas for the retrofitting, I think, on the fire code? What I saw with a lot of the storms that were, when there were the fire was in the area, was a lot of ember storms and the way that those embers were spread. And so it, and the discussion I think that's been happening is it's just that if that ember storm makes it into wood structures, gets into kindling of some sort, leaves around the building. So I'm just wondering if some of this advice, some of this information can also be either collected or sought after from some of the sources that it's coming from in a way that could be used by people for upgrading their current residences to be safer on the fireside? So anyway, it's very good to hear. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. No further comments? Go ahead and close the public hearing. And yeah, I don't know if there's any kind of a publication or website that might be out there that the state might have produced to do something like that, say, you know, if you're going to do some home improvement projects, then here are some, here are the top 10 simple steps that a homeowner could take. I don't know if those exist, but it's something we can look for anyway. Yes, City Manager?
So, oh, look at that.
It works.
Okay. One thing that has been done is that you have an urban wildland interface area now in which if you fall within this area that is considered an urban wildland, there are specific code requirements that you're required to meet in your construction. And a lot of it has to do with preventing embers from getting into your house. It has to do with how much clearance you have around your building. And they are constantly updating those maps. And I know a lot of the area around Santa Rosa is an urban wildland interface area. You don't have it right here because you don't have a forest right next to you per se, but that is in the code as far as additional requirements that are meant to prevent embers from going into your structures.
Yeah, and I'm thinking if there was some, I'm just going to use the word simpler publication, you know, a two to four page for a homeowner, here's something you can do. I know a group called Firesafe Marin has been producing those kinds of publications for the last 10 or 15 years, so that information is probably out there. And if there's a way that maybe we can get our hands on something and put, you know, flyers in City Hall, I mean, I'll even look those up myself and see if I can get some. That would be one option, so, but thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. And also, thank you very much for all the work you've given us over the years. Appreciate that as well. Congratulations on retirement. All right, so that was a receive and file. And are there any further questions from councilmembers on this topic?
Thank you.
Nope? All right. Then we will move on to item 11B, which is the emergency operation plan update. And I will turn that over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So it's a fortuitous timing, I guess, it just happens to be tonight that we're talking about this. So before you, in this packet are actually two separate guides. One's a council guide to emergency operations. It's more of a, just a brief primer on sort of a high-level council role in emergency operations. And that's not for adoption, it's just for information. And then there's also the emergency operations plan update, which is included, which is proposed for adoption. So this is, you know, this is an update to our existing emergency operations plan. Historically, we have, we have trained with Runner Park and Rancho Adobe. We typically, in the past, have done mutual trainings. We also have a variety of mutual aid agreements in place with the county of Sonoma, as well as Runner Park, Rancho Adobe, and all, basically, the large majority of the water and sewer districts throughout the state of California through a mutual aid GPA. So in addition to, in addition to our own plan, we have these mutual aid agreements with all these other agencies. And how, just sort of emergency operations 101, how it works is that the county by statute is the, is the lead agency for emergency coordination in the county of Sonoma or in any county, right? You have a county EOC and they're sort of, they're the hub because you wouldn't, local jurisdictions can't typically go to the state, for example, and request aid. It has to all go through the county. So the county's the clearinghouse for all of the jurisdictions within that county and it funnels up from there. And so if the city of Catanis, for example, were to open its EOC, we can, we can request that the county open their EOC if we expect that we need resources and assistance in whatever area. And the county, if there's more than two cities that open their EOCs, the counties automatically open their EOC to provide assistance for the multiple cities. So that's sort of how it works in real kind of high level. So the city's been working on updates to the plan, but also to a variety of systems at the city. One of the main focuses was communication systems because it's one of the things that we found is, it might seem obvious if you think about it, but that if you can't communicate, you don't, you really can't do much of anything, regardless of how good your other elements of the plan are. So we spent a lot of time thinking through communications as well as all of the potential failure scenarios of communication, and there's many. So as we, you know, as we activate in, you know, in EO, in EOC, oftentimes, you know, you can lose internet communication, you can lose landlines, you can lose cellular, you can, you know, then you have to fall back on radio and then you could potentially lose radio as well. So, you know, we took it all the way down to, you know, fit all the different modes of failure, all the way back down to if you have to physically walk the message to somebody to get that communications out. So we spent a lot of time thinking through those various scenarios as well as pre-planning all the different scenarios that are, you know, easily foreseeable, you know, floods, earthquakes, fires, that sort of thing. So that entails, you know, pre-writing messages, emergency proclamations. And how these things normally would work is the emergency operations director would typically do an emergency proclamation, which would then be ratified by the council within a week, and then the council would have to re-ratify that. The main value for an emergency proclamation is it allows emergency purchasing processes to go into effect. Earlier in this year, we updated our purchasing policies, which included emergency purchasing, which is all just another element of all the stuff that we've been working on to make sure that all was, all the framework's in place as needed. With the, just using it as an example, when the county, the county for the high wind events and the public safety power shut-offs, they declared a local emergency. And so when the county declares it, by default, it covers all the jurisdictions within the county. So we wouldn't need to necessarily declare a local emergency for like federal aid or state aid reimbursement because we're already covered under the county's proclamation. We would only do that if we're the, if we're the only jurisdiction declaring it. Then we declare it for that reason also, in addition to the purchasing, emergency purchasing benefits you get from that. And then, just some of the things that are in the staff report that I mentioned, the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center provisioning, internal communications processes, really thinking through the, all the steps involved in all the different processes as well as all the different modes of failure and making sure that, you know, we, we had an emergency operations plan that was much more actionable. The plan before was fine. It met all the FEMA and ICS requirements, but we reoriented this one to be, especially in the first 72 hours, when there's a lot of confusion potentially and not a lot of, a lot of communication systems failing, to making sure that we had pre-planning for that, especially the first couple of days, so that we can get things off the ground and running quickly. And then, an element of that, of course, is, you know, backup power, making provisions for that and failure mode testing for our water and sewer infrastructure as well and public communication systems and as well as updating resources for the city website. So the city website, for example, if you go on it, since we updated it, we've been adding emergency, you know, preparedness resources for the public. And that's, that's been there for a while, but that's just another kind of facet of what we were working on with all the different elements, including this. Training, we've been working on training, so all of our leads are either fully trained or almost there in a variety of ICS. This is, this is like incident command system trainings. So if you're into that kind of stuff, ICS 100, 200, 400, 800, it's a lot of training. And then also, we're also engaged in regular county-wide emergency preparedness meetings and we're taking part in the next statewide drill, which is on October 17th, which is the Great Shakeout, it's an earthquake drill. So we'll be doing a local drill here for that. So for the EOP to be considered in effect, it needs to be adopted by the city council. And like I mentioned earlier, the EOPs have to be consistent with the state OES, which is the Office of Emergency Services, as well as FEMA's guidelines, and this plan is. And then, if the council adopts the EOP tonight, then the next step will be some cleanup to the disaster operations code, which is fairly minor, but we just need to get it consistent with current, kind of the current state of things. And then we also have, I think I mentioned this before, but we also have a FEMA grant for a local hazard mitigation plan, which we'd be updating concurrent, concurrently with the county. The county's also updating their local hazard mitigation plan in this coming year, so we'd be tying into that with a FEMA grant. And so that's, that allows us to apply, or any jurisdiction that has a local hazard mitigation plan, it allows you to apply for infrastructure and equipment grants as well. So that's the benefit of that primarily, in addition to additional planning, planning out scenarios. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. I'll start to my left. Any questions for city staff? I'll start with Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. ICS, well, this takes me back a bit. Incident command system is the same thing that fire departments and fire districts use to run emergencies and it's designed for larger ones, but we typically use it on everything, simply to get in the habit, which kind of leads to the question I had. So how often would our staff get to drill and actually practice this rather actually complex system? Couple, two, three times a year probably? At the max, I would think?
Yeah, so as we, as we move forward in this EOP, we're, the plan is to do quarterly drills on it.
Quarterly, okay, good.
Yeah. But for example, like today, we activated the EOC just to, you know, and it, not only does it serve a function, it also lets people get their hands on to sort of how it all works and keeps it fresh in everyone's mind.
Well, good. I would suggest with that then too, if possible, I noticed you had some various areas where staff were kind of assigned. To the degree you can keep the same people assigned to the same roles, there's some value in that because then when a real emergency hits, it's a lot easier having some background in it rather than sitting down, putting on your vest with your little label and cracking your packet and see just what it is you're supposed to do. So I think that would be great. The other, not so much a question, but just a suggestion. I noticed on page 49, we talk about who will act as the role of mayor if the mayor's not available and it suggests, obviously, the vice mayor would perform that, or if not available, it just says another city council. I forget where else we do this, but I think we've been moving to using the outgoing mayor, like some other organizations and cities do, just when the mayor, vice mayor isn't available, that gives you a third choice and it kind of avoids that Alexander Haig moment of trying to decide who's in charge. I also wanted to test and see who's almost as old as I am, so that helps a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Moore. So just a suggestion, but I think that might be helpful because the less... So, just a suggestion, but I think that might be helpful, because the less decisions you have to make that are small ones, and the more you can move to the important work, is really helpful in an emergency. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
All right, not at this point. And let's go this way. Councilmember Harvey.
You mentioned the mutual aid agreements, and I know there's lots of them, and that is one of the things, you know, after the 2017 fires, when we had a panel at League of California Cities, from the various different players that were in that, and they said that that is one of the most important things that you can do, is to have that pre-lined up, because the last thing that you want to do in the midst of an emergency is trying to figure out how that aid is going to work. And so, there is a process, and this is who it is, and this is where you're going to report, and this is what you're going to do. Those agreements lay out all those things, and they said that it was extremely beneficial to kind of have all of that in place, so that when you need that aid to work together, you already have a protocol for how you are going to work together. So, I'm glad to see that that's in there. You know, you mentioned communication, and there was a comment about communications, you know, in the events that are happening today. One of the things that is a double-edged sword, you know, people want communication quickly, and people keep asking for communication quickly, but some of the communication is very fluid, and the other thing that happens quite often is making sure that the message is consistent. And since this was a large event, being coordinated by PG&E, it's important that there's consistent messaging out there, so that we don't have one area saying one thing and one another. And I'll just give you an example of that. I happened to go check on my mother-in-law today, who happens to live in assisted living, and I said, you know, what's your plan? What are you guys going to do? And they said, oh, well, we're getting to that, you know, we're going to let people know. I said, okay, that's fine. And they were getting very different pieces of messaging about timing and all of that. So, I think that while it takes a little bit longer, I think it is important that people get a consistent message, and I think that while it may look like we're just cutting and pasting a message, that's because I know for a fact that Damian was working on this much of the day with all the members in the county, because I spoke to him more than once today, so that all the agencies are putting out a consistent messages, so as not to confuse people, because when different people get different messages, then nobody knows who to believe. So, it's a double-edged sword. It's hard, and it's fluid, but that's sometimes why that takes a little bit longer. I just, that's, that's hard, you know? It is hard for people to, because they want to know now. The other thing I noticed in the emergency plan, there are references, and I can give you the pages if you want, but to SMART not being there yet, and SMART is there, so it talks about SMART coming, SMART's here, and there's some references to the Sonoma County Water Agency, which is not the Sonoma County Water Agency anymore, it's Sonoma Water. So, those were just two things that I think need a little bit of updating, when you were saying you were going to kind of put that pencil and dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Very good. Thank you for that. Councilmember Moore, questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments, so it's a very extensive report, and very well thought out, so I think that's great. I did, actually, I do have a question. On the City of Cataná Elected Officials' Guide to Emergency Operations, is that typically a template, or is that a document that we've created?
It's, so the original document was based on a San Jose guide that had been developed, but then we modified it for Cataná.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it started as sort of a template.
I found it interesting, some of the tips for responding to questions from the media in a disaster. Thought that was very interesting. And then, delivering the message, very interesting topics there. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Thank you. And yeah, I did provide the city manager some comments on that same document you're talking about, the City of Cataná Elected Officials' Guide to Emergency Operations. Having gone through a number of those, and I guess the one thing, the more I thought about it, that I didn't see with respect to training, and I know that it's typically, it's going to be a staff-oriented function to do all of these tasks, and there is that occasional, oh, we want to hear a quote from one of your electeds. I think it would be wise that every elected, and maybe, maybe, we even push this down to the planning commissioners, take the ICS 100 training through FEMA. It's an online training course. We required, when I was at the park, we required everybody to take it, because it's kind of high-level stuff, high-level in the sense that it doesn't dig down into the weeds very deeply at all, and I think it's just good orientation, it gets the vernacular out there. So, when you hear acronyms like ICS, you know it's the Incident Command System, or any of those other things. So, it's just an idea, and I mean, I think that's an easy implementation, because if I remember right, it was FEMA, I'm pretty sure, an online training, you know, and you get a little certificate, so you have to have proof that you took the training, you get a certificate. So, anyway, I would just kind of maybe add that into the mix. It doesn't need to be in stone in here, but somewhere as a reference, I think it'd be great. Okay.
I love that idea.
Yeah, it's, it's really good if you've never really heard that, you know, all the different acronyms that are out there, and different words that are used. I know you have.
Mr. Mayor, I'm completely supportive, but I have to admit it largely because I had all my certificates for a long time.
I understand that, as do I, but guess what? You still have to take it again. You've got to refresh it every year. All right. With that, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Anyone? Mr. Beric?
Councilman Beric, thank you, Mayor. Well, we've heard a lot about plans, and plans, and procedures, and plans, and more plans, and policies, and plans on top of plans. But the reality is, let's go back 20 years ago to an emergency workshop that was held in this room by planner Dennis Dorich and police chief Robert Stewart. Robert Stewart opened up the meeting after some ado and said, "The reality is, most likely, none of the staff or city council members in the event of a large emergency are going to be coming to work." He says, "I'm going to try my best. I don't have any kids. I'm going to try my best to get here, but I've got a plan, and I'm not going to have any officers that are going to come to work either, because they're going to be busy taking care of their own families, their own properties, their own health, and so forth, and we got it." So, the reality here and the real message is, plans are great, you need plans, they need to be updated, they need to be coordinated with our agencies, but the fact is, government's not coming. The help is not coming. The cavalry's not coming, the government's not coming, maybe for days or weeks. And I was trained with community emergency response team by the finest San Rosa Fire Department, who said, "You're on your own." And they taught us a lot on how to work with the city government, to be your hands and feet on the streets, to help you direct traffic, do search and rescue, so on and so forth. We don't have CERT anymore. It's been unfunded, or whatever. So, we need to do more to educate the public to take care of themselves, because our staff most likely is not coming to work. I mean, police chief's out in Bodega Bay, God knows what's going to happen to the roads from Bodega Bay out here. We need more talk about that. And your supplies? Where are your supplies? Where's your triage? Where's all your emergency supplies? Where's the food? Where's the water? Where's ammunition? Where's the help? Where are all your volunteers? Where's the fuel? Where's the gasoline? What are you going to plug your electrical car into? How are you going to charge your phone? These are the things you need to, where the rubber meets the road. This is all fun and games, it's important, but you're missing the real message, is that in the event of a large disaster, we are unprepared, the city has done no coordination with the public on any emergency drills, minimum, minimum education, and you all get a big fat F.
All right. Well, thank you for those salient comments. Ms. Alderman.
My understanding of all of this was that this was basically, we have to, you have to do the operations plan, because if you want aid in the future, and grants, and...
It's working.
And grants and everything, but it doesn't deal with the practicalities, it doesn't deal with, it leaves it up to, you know, we're a small city, and city manager, and then the police chief, and then, what if you guys are somewhere in Marin County? There's, there's, there's things that need to be in place, like, okay, a power outage at midnight, we're going to open up the Ray Millers Community Center. Those, there's nothing about that. There's scripts of how to respond to nixels, but if you don't have power, you're not going to get a nixel. There's, I mean, you've got to have more preparedness, too, and write on how to communicate. And things like, yes, Susan has a good thing about consistency, but like, the police, Cataná Police Facebook page, had, all it did was to give a link to PG&E. Well, PG&E website was down, and so, but there is a map available of what parts of Cataná were supposed to be uninfected. So, it would have been helpful to have that map, so that instead of, you know, a broken link to PG&E, for that specific enough, because people on, like, the west side are not on the power shot, it's only L section and parts of E. But, you know, like, on nextdoor.com, they got on, and we're like, well, we're putting in our address, it's saying no, but people are just confused when, because we're split in half as far as the power outage, so I just think that needs to be, specific things need to be addressed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, council. Really appreciate that we're going through this exercise, and it's, at the moment, it's very, very visible. I did follow, I've got a number of the messages through, and I think it is, listening to other people as well, I mean, it does get the message that people need to pay attention and do some preparation for it. As a small jurisdiction, I think we really have to relate to the fact that we're going to fit in with everybody else, and the question that came to my mind in 2017, when I was looking at everything, is that Rona Park, with the way that the fires were coming, was two steps away from, if they started evacuating, I would need to listen to when we needed to start evacuating. So, the critical side of all of this for Cataná, depending on which way things going, is, I think, to follow, to be consistent with the message that everybody else is conveying, and to use the resources that are outside there, because certainly, I stepped to PG&E website, did link, but the ARC GIS website that was there was absolutely brilliant. And it's just a really difficult thing to test from, and expensive, if you're going to have to scale a website, to have it there all the time, to be able to respond. I mean, PG&E is what we need to actually have them do that, because it's their business to do that, so we need to feed back to them, but it was fantastic to be able to step to the ARC GIS and have that come up and visible. So, I think we need to look at where the successes are, how can we, as a small jurisdiction, really keep that message the same that everybody else is doing, but where is the trigger that then actually comes in? And I don't know the answer to that. I mean, it's certainly, it's integrating it in. I know people in 2017, they smelt the smoke, and they started leaving at 3:00 a.m. in the morning, and they ended up in a big traffic jam. We know that, also, that story with Houston, when Houston advised everybody to leave, I mean, it was more people from one of the hurricanes, more people died then on the roads, this was, I think, four or five years ago, died in the traffic jams that were outside the city. And I know, I also heard that in the 2017 analysis, there was a plan in place where they were in the Sonoma Valley, where they were going to turn it into a one-way, the roads into one-way systems, which was basically out, and that never came to it. So, I mean, how we get the information across, how we identify local situations, how we get people to really pay attention to what they need to do, is challenging, and it certainly creates a lot of anxiety. I certainly, my wife has called up a number of people and said, gee, you're in Rona Park and the areas, you know, if something goes wrong, you're welcome to come and visit us. So, you know, getting the community really needs to survive that first 24, 48, 72 hours. We know that in any emergency, that's something there. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no one? I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. I mean, I will add, those are all very good points that everybody's made, and probably our worst enemy is complacency. So, nobody's even talking about the fire event that may be sitting out there right now, because we're all concerned about, oh, this wind, it could, we're going to turn, PG&E's going to be turning power off, so maybe it won't start a fire. No. That's just one little precautionary thing that PG&E is doing, for their own reasons, we won't get into that right now. So, I think the biggest thing that can really hurt us in general, for any kind of an event like this, is complacency. Well, there's a huge storm that's coming in next Thursday, and, but I'm not worried about it, because I don't really have to, you know, the streets are fine, nothing's going to back up, and I'm not talking bad about our streets and systems, because they do flow quite well. But I think it's really important that we have to take some of that onus on ourselves. So, I remember during those fires of 2017, I made sure all of the cat carriers were out of the rafters in the garage and down on the ground, and if we needed to throw a cat, or two, or three in there, and throw them in the car, we were ready to go, and, you know, had some other dog food available, so we could take the dog, and the dog's got food. How many people in this room, out of curiosity, see a show of hands, own and have with them a cell phone? Just out of curiosity, right? And how many of those people have it charged over 50% right now? I didn't see all the hands come back up, but again, there's a simple little thing. If you lose power, how are you going to charge these silly things, right? Look, I'm charging as we speak.
Your car?
Right. No, I mean, and there are options, but then you've got to go find the cable. I mean, there's just a lot of things, it's a whole planning prescription, it's just a lot of things that we have to think about. So, I mean, what city staff has done, literally all day, is been on phone calls, and in meetings, and working with the county, and our neighbors next door as well, so that's critical. But I want to share this, but go ahead, please.
Yeah, it's funny that you mentioned the cell phones, because, you know, oftentimes, elderly folks, they have cell phones, but they think of them like regular phones. So, at home, you hang up your phone, and your phone is hung up there. I find that a lot of elderly folks tend to turn off their cell phones unless they're using them, and then they turn them on, which has two problems. One, if you try and reach them on them, you can't reach them, because they're turned off. So, you know, again, another simple thing, you know, in an emergency, these things aren't going to work. Have your phone charged and leave it on. It'll be okay.
I wouldn't charge it overnight, but I would, yeah, I would leave it on overnight. Exactly. No, I mean...
It's okay. And as far as the comment about the PG&E site, I think that that is a message that PG&E needs to hear loud and clear. Their network is not where it needs to be. If everybody's giving a consistent message to go look at PG&E, PG&E has to have the resources for people to be able to do that, because otherwise, Ms. Alderman's right, you're going to get splintered, people are going to have to splinter that stuff and start saving it elsewhere, you know? So, if PG&E wants everyone pointed there, they really need to step up their network to be able to handle that kind of traffic, because it was really bad today, and not only was... And not only was it bad, it also was putting out messages that said that this site may have been hacked because you are not at PG&E's website. So they really need to do a little bit of work there.
It's all very comforting.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think it's network related, but whatever.
Right. All right. Great. Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Moore? Anything to add?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. Very good. Councilmember Landman?
I'm just going to chime in with Councilmember, you reminded me, I was thinking, I checked it in the morning, it functioned, it was a useful map. We kind of had a rough idea what was going, that was right after staff had waited to the appropriate time to actually make sure we were giving out the correct, the final decision from PG&E because we don't want, because they were changing their minds right up till about lunchtime. But then the next time I changed, checked it, not only could I not get him, but I got that, you, this may not, Safari doesn't want to go here because this may not be a, it's like, that's amateur hour. You know, I can see perhaps getting hit with additional bandwidth, considering the number of people hitting it, that's something that can be fixed, but something like that. Older browsers might not even allow them to link with that. So I just wanted to say, having kind of seen how this works, I think this is a great plan. It's long, it's difficult. My hat's off to staff, who are on top of everything else you do, trying to digest ICS and only get to practice it a few times and then do it in an emergency. And I know you're not alone in that, everybody in the county has to try to do that. But having lived through this numerous times in years past during some rather interesting floods, it's always a mix of a pre-plan and then improvisation. Because plans are great, but then certain constraints happen, infrastructure, ability to go directions, resources change and people are left to deal with what they can. But the best part of it is by working hard, have a good pre-plan, you wind up having the opportunity of more likely having a higher percentage of the plan coming through. And that's really what you want to hit. So when we're done with our comments, I would be happy to move a resolution approving this emergency updated operations plan.
Can I have one more? Okay.
Why are you whispering?
I asked.
Oh, yeah. No, you can, of course, and I'll come back to the Vice Mayor.
Yeah. You know, there was mention of, you know, where's the supplies and having the supplies. One of the things that I thought was real useful in here is the checklist. So you're not making, you're not trying to figure that out ahead. There's an actual checklist for each different unit and what they're looking for. So those lists are in there, they probably are there to be able to be modified, but rest assured, there are lists in there for people to check to see where those supplies are.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skulman?
No, thank you. I mean, it's a very thorough and appreciate all of the work, especially with what was going on today, to get all this ready. So it is, it is ironic, but very timely, so that is all I have to say.
Very good. And I know, you know, if the city loses power, I mean, we have two, three buildings here. I'm very confident in saying that we have generators, that we could fire up gas generators. So city, if, if city staff can get to the facility here, then City Hall will function relatively normal in many emergencies. We're talking floods, fires, depends, you know, it depends where these things are, earthquake. I think we're pretty safe from tsunamis here. So I'm comfortable in the fact that we've got generators and we use those. Again, and, and I'm just putting all of this back to, for 36 years, what we had out at Point Reyes, same thing. We actually had food, we had sleeping bags, we had bottled water, and it's something, you have to rotate that stuff out as well. And I think the experience comes, Mr. Berich mentioned, I mean, that wasn't the word you used, but you mentioned, you know, sort of on-the-ground experience. The plans are great for one thing, but what about training, if you will, hands-on? And, and I know that those exercises do take place with, like, our police staff and Rona Park and probably the Sheriff's Department as well. So that's, you know, that's how you do it. But more often than not, as Councilmember Landman said, yeah, you have these plans together and you review them and you practice skills, but when the time comes, it's just, it's a whole nother world. But staying focused on what you have in your plan is what will get you through it in a, first of all, safe way, but then also safe for all of our citizens. You have another comment, please?
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
You know, and it was mentioned...
I'm going to go ahead and go ahead, Vice Mayor. We've got conversations going on in the public.
I know.
I'm just able to hear what's going on in the public.
Yes, it does. And I apologize for...
I'm going to say from here, I'm having a hard time tracking some of the conversation too. This has been the whole meeting almost now.
Okay.
So one of the things that was mentioned was about staff being here. And yes, there would be sometimes extenuating circumstances, but I sit on enough of the different county boards and things. In the 2017 fires, the dedication of the staff that could get places, I mean, you hear, I've heard so many stories of folks at the water agency whose houses have burned, were burning or burnt down, and they stayed at work 24/7 to make sure that people had water. Same with, you know, police and fire and, and other workers that were manning, you know, the different emergency centers. So yes, there would be, you know, some instances where people couldn't get here, but I have to say that in general, many employees would do the best that they could to try and get here because they know how important their jobs are to keep the public safe. And I just have to say that because there was so many stories about people who, you know, had lost so much, yet they were still there and they were still moving forward to try and help others.
Good points. I do remember in 1995, which was the first of the three times that I was actually elected into office, that I was the Vice Mayor that year, and that was the year that we had a 13,000-acre fire out at the park. And we actually worked 24-hour shifts the first three days, but then we got support from mutual agencies. And so we went down to the very calm 12-hour shifts, which were delightful, and, and then still being Vice Mayor. So there was a little bit of a challenge there, but I, but I know what, when you're talking about the dedication that employees have, I mean, we heard about that in 2017 with, you know, a lot of, well, I mean, I heard it from, you know, dispatchers and police officers here, I heard it from people at Sonoma County Ag and Open Space and how they were helping out. I mean, it was just everybody, you know, and that's what you do. That is just what you do.
All hands on deck?
That's exactly right. And maybe even as, as an addendum to this planning effort, but not to be taken on, and this is not direction at any point in time, does the city also have an evacuation plan? Like out of these buildings, for example, an earthquake hits, and is there an evacuation plan? I, I'm not sure I've seen it, but...
Yeah, there is an evacuation plan.
Okay.
For, you're talking like for staff and people in the buildings?
Yeah, specifically for people in the buildings, mostly staff. Right. Now, that's good. So I mean...
It's posted, and there's posted signs for evacuation and there's signs out in the parking lot, assembly areas.
Assemble, yeah. See, that's perfect. And I would encourage, once a year, we did this at work too, we would all of a sudden have an emergency message go out over radios and telephones in our, in all the offices saying, "An earthquake has just hit, you need to go outside to your gathering spot." And every building had a leader in charge who was responsible, knowing who was at work that day and are they all accounted for? Is everybody out of that building? And then we go and meet at the one designated location. So I, I know you guys are on top of that, so it's, it's all a part of this planning effort. And, but going through that physical exercise, I just remember from years of baseball, it's that muscle memory thing. The more you do it, in theory, the better you get. Didn't always work in my case, but, but that's exactly how, how it should work. Okay. With that, we're looking for approval by resolution for this EOP.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution approving the updated emergency operations plan.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Please show a 5-0 vote in favor. And again, a very excellent job by staff in putting this together. And we're now on item 11C, Recommendation to Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association for Appointment to League of California Cities North Bay Division Executive Board.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this should be a pretty straightforward item. It's, as you mentioned, it's for the League of California Cities North Bay Division Executive Board, an appointment to that. This is by the Mayors and Council Members Association. And there is one position to fill for the expired term of Susan Harvey. It's a two-year term from appointment. All cities except for Cloverdale are eligible because of Cloverdale's in the Redwood Division of the league rather than North Bay. And so we have one letter of interest from Mike Healy from Petaluma, Petaluma Council Member. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's the end of that report. Okay. Really, there shouldn't be any questions, but I will do the proper...
Are you saying we should have no questions about Mike Healy? Or you're saying we should have no questions about his candidacy?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we'll come back, I will open this up for public comment. Anybody has any public comments on this? And they're all shaking their head, no. All right. Now it's back to us for direction.
I'd like to suggest we support Mr. Healy.
And I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, and there's even a third. Do we have any further discussion?
Unless we have annihilation from the floor.
I don't believe we do. So there's no further discussion on this then? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, no, it's just direction for me. But I, I like direction, if it's given to me in the form of, okay, let's just move on.
He's so directed.
I am directed. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other votes on that?
I'm sorry?
I said, do you have any other votes on that? It wasn't unanimous, yes.
Well, we don't need to.
No, you don't.
Okay. Didn't we just say that?
No.
Really confusing. It's not late. That's the scary part. All right. Let's move on to item 12, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is, I think, gold news to everyone at this point, but PG&E informed us that they intend to shut the power off. Newsflash, yeah. For a large part of Sonoma County tonight due to the wind conditions and humidity conditions. So the power shut-off is expected to start at midnight and the affected area is fully de-energized by 4:00 AM in the morning. Power is expected to be restored Thursday afternoon based on the weather forecasts. At this time, the potentially affected areas of Katati may include areas east of Lancaster Drive, primarily Ryan Lane-Santero Way, Windmill Farms and Sunflower, and portions of Keet Way potentially. However, wind conditions may damage other power lines and result in further power outages. So just a reminder to everyone that just because you're not in the shut-off areas doesn't mean that you may not lose power because when the wind blows, things fall over and it could result in an unplanned power outage. So community updates have been posted on our website as well as all of our social media platforms and the Water Smart Utility messaging. People should check back on the city website regularly for updates. We, as was mentioned in our discussion earlier, the, when we have these county-wide mobilizations, the joint, what's called the Joint Information Center, it's out of the county, it puts together the messaging so that there's consistent messaging, which is what we talked about earlier. And it's an important, it's important that we're consistent in what we say because that wasn't always the case in the 2017 fires. And that was a lesson learned from that event, which is why the messaging is what it is Also, this was also mentioned, but the City Hall and the PD Police Department both have generators for backup power. And like I guess you'd expect, the generators were topped off with fuel, so they're ready to go in case there is a power outage. And we also have some rental, rental generators as well, a rental generator as well, for water and sewer backups if we need them, if those utilities lose power. Homeland Security, we also got a Homeland Security grant, and it's funded through the Sonoma County Office of Emergency Management. It's 12 portable radios that are dual-band VHF/UHF, and while that's important, is, is police and fire agencies use different bands. And so it allows them to cross, you know, talk across the different bands. And also, and also a grant, another grant for ALPRs, mobile ALPRs for patrol cars that helps in locating stolen automobiles if they happen to be in Katati. It's part of a statewide system. And then I'll mention again that we have a housing workshop coming up on October 24th in the evening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the point of this workshop is to get citizen input on several housing initiatives the city is, or will be undertaking in the coming months. And we're going to do a brief presentation on the changes in housing regulations resulting from the recent state legislation and ask for input from everyone on, on these issues. And there was, there also will be an online survey that will be made available during the workshop and after for anyone that has input either at the meeting or can attend the meeting or has thoughts after the meeting. So we'll continue to collect comments after the workshop. And again, the point is to, to both respond to state housing mandates and also just the housing crisis in general and how it, you know, finding solutions to that, that best fit Katati. And any changes, of course, will come before the Planning Commission and City Council Public Hearings for Review and Action as part of a formal adoption process. So it's part of a multi-step process, as you would expect. On the roadway projects, Monday, we had some change conditions at East Katati and Old Rowood Highway intersection. That's a, an ongoing process with safety signage and traffic control cones that we're going to continue to use until the permanent striping and signs are in place. And these sign, these change condition signs and flags will be in place at least, at least a few weeks after the striping. And once the striping and signage is done, which is expected this week for most of East Katati and Old Rowood Highway, then the project will wrap up shortly after that. Paving east of the railroad tracks is continuing this week. If you were out there, you probably saw the, the, what the former road is now pretty, pretty much dirt in a lot of places there at East Katati. Mm-hmm. And so that's, that's going to be paving for much of the week and then curing, the asphalt will have to cure. And then striped, which will happen, I believe, the week after this. And then cussing, all the onsite utilities have been put in place, joint trench work, this is the dry utilities like, like cable and electricity are going in next Wednesday. And the retaining walls are continuing to go in this week along the southeast property lines. And then finally, just some recreation news. This Saturday, October 12th, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting their 13th Annual Oktoberfest in La Plaza Park. This will take place from noon to 6:00 PM and will include live music, German food and beer, and famous, the famous wiener dog race. So for more information, you can contact the Chamber at 795-5508. On October 14th, this is a Monday, we'll be offering our Camp Katati PJ Party for children ages 5 to 12. This is a local holiday off for school kids, but many parents have to work, so it gives them an, an alternative for going to school. And your kids can spend the day in their, in their PJs, playing games, doing crafts. We're opening from 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. Space is limited, so sign up early. Again, just a reminder, we're currently in the process of planning our city Halloween event with, and we're also this year working with Rancho Katati High School Recreation Students and look forward to seeing new elements added to the event. Which is event for, that's free for everyone and is Halloween Day from 1:30 to 5:30 PM. And children can visit each office at City Hall here for free candy and goodies and, and enjoy visiting with city staff and, and we get to meet the community members, which is always a fun event. The city, in case you have not heard, also has a YouTube page and Instagram page now, so follow along for updates and highlights of life in Katati and city happenings. Be sure to check out our Explore Katati video highlighting some of the many parts of Katati that make us unique and charming. Also, our Fall and Winter Activity Guide is out. If you haven't seen it, your mailbox is, you should shortly. This is, you know, be, it'll be in the next couple of days and also available at City Hall, Oliver's and other local businesses. I saw it, it's on our website, but I saw the physical copies delivered today here at City Hall, so look for that shortly. And if you have any questions on this or anything related to recreation, you can contact Ashley at 665-4222 or a Wilson at kataticy.org. Of course, you always can go to our website, Facebook page, Instagram, and, anyway, many ways to find information, so please look there or just give Ashley a call or email. Thanks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. And the L section, I rode my bike through most of the L section, looks great. There's no, I suppose there's going to be a little bit of road striping, I don't know what to call it, you know, stop sign, that kind of stuff, but the paving process looks great. It's just, it's just amazing when you pave a road, it's like, wow, look at the difference. And we've got a lot of those... And we've got a lot of those that we have to take care of still, we know. Any questions? Yes, please.
Yeah. As far as PG&E powering backup the lines, I know they have to make sure that they're okay before they turn them on. Is there an order in which they do that, or do they talk about an order? It just, people have asked, and I have no idea whether they put that information out or send multiple teams out, or how that works, if you can speak to that.
So PG&E is pretty stretched. I heard something like 32 counties are getting their power shut off in some way tonight. So they're stretched pretty thin, which is part of the reason why PG&E's website went down. And while, in our press releases, we also put an alternate site for people to go to, you know, the county fire map site, or the PG&E outage site, I should say. And then in terms of priority, there's a couple of answers to that question. So critical infrastructure, like hospitals and government facilities, those types of things are examples of what they call critical infrastructure. And so we work with PG&E, and we provide them lists of all of our critical infrastructure and the account numbers, the, you know, utility account numbers, so they know which, which accounts and where they're located, so that they prioritize that. So in general, that's a priority for PG&E. Yeah. I mean, they can't just turn on that particular facility.
Right.
Those areas where those facilities exist, yeah. Generally, I'd say, though, those facilities tend to be in urban areas. So I think as you see the PG&E, as you see PG&E re-energize areas, the most likely thing you'll see is urban areas re-energizing first because of the sort of density of high critical facilities, but also the population densities. And then some of the rural areas are just lower priority because there's less critical facilities, there's less population, and that might take longer. But in order for them to re-energize, they have to inspect all their lines. And so what we're hearing from PG&E is the weather event is forecast to end around midday on Thursday, after which they have to then inspect all their facilities and then start re-energizing them. If there's been damage, so if they're only inspecting them, everything's still fine, then the re-energization will be fairly quick. If there's areas where there's been physical damage caused by the wind, then they have to also repair it, so re-energization could take a little bit longer, which is why some of the deadline, or some of the timeframes are a bit longer. They might say Thursday night to re-energize, or it could be as long as five days out, depending on what kind of damage they have to fix.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for City Manager and his report? All right. We will go on to item 13, City Council Member Reports, and I will turn to my right this time, and I'll start with Councilmember Harvey.
Oh.
That's you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, let's see, what's today? Tuesday. So yesterday, there was a special meeting of the Water Advisory Committee, and that committee was convened to be able to approve a resolution having to do with the Potter Valley relicensing activities. And just to kind of give people a kind of quick what's going on there, PG&E is not renewing their license. Their license expires in April of 2022, and they had determined that they would not file for relicensing. So a group of entities has gotten together and created a planning agreement to be able to apply for that license. They had to put in a submittal by the end of June, which they did, and it's a pre-application document and a proposed schedule to FERC relating to continuing the Potter Valley operations, which calls for development of a feasibility study and evaluate appropriate relic, appropriate relicensing, right, relicensing project, as well as the creation of a regional entity to pursue the relicensing. Now, that's a big deal. If you think about it, at the end of June, no one else applied, so this group applied. But to be able to prepare that feasibility study by April is a pretty tight timeline. They have put an RFP out for vendors to be able to help with that feasibility study. They got three, I think, that they interviewed, and they are getting very close to, they hope to have a contract this week, it was reported, so they are working on a contract. It was also mentioned that, I guess, some of the work that had been done by PG&E, they hope to be able to get that to help them, and it looks like that information, although everyone thought that it was farther along than it was, that they might not get that information until more towards the end of the year, which makes it a little bit tight. But anyways, this agreement, what it does for us is, says that the water contractors have a common interest in this feasibility study and related work being performed by the planning agreement signatories as it relates to the Russian River operations, water supply liability and costs, and other interests sought to be protected through a two-basin solution. And the water contractors have a continuing obligation to their respective customers, which is where we come to play, to seek the most cost-effective means to assure water supply resiliency. So therefore, the Water Advisory Committee hereby adopts the attached statement of interest to ensure continued successful collaboration with the agency and ensure that the water contractors are fully informed and engaged in the development of the feasibility study and the FERC relicensing process. And that was unanimously approved at the WAC yesterday. So what that allows is, as things are happening, while they're happening very quickly, and we may not be able to have as much input as we like, we will still get information and continue to get information about where they're at. Some folks had wanted to be able to have input and say and review and all that, and the timeline is really just so short that there's not time, as you may imagine, to go out to 10 different cities and North Marin Water District and Marin and the little water districts to be able to get them to review and approve and all the documents. So we will stay informed, we will, you know, weigh in where we can weigh in. But this is an important document to make sure that, that that happens. And I think the Water Agency knows our feelings on that. They have been very open with us in sharing information, and look forward to hearing more about what is feasible, because right now, we really don't know what the possibilities are. And ultimately, it will be our customers, the collective we, customers, that will have to pay for whatever that solution is. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
I can answer questions if you have them.
Any questions for Councilmember Harvey? Nope, not this time.
Well, that sounded like a fun meeting. I was at the REMF meeting on the 17th, no, on the 26th, and REMF is, is doing pretty well at the moment. The health plan is doing very well. There is consideration and a further study considering consolidation and merging with another JPA that does a lot of what we do, which is ParsAC. And they are a governing body of 35 members, and REMF, Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, is a governing body of 15 members. So there's some further study on how we might govern that and what that might look like. We would have greater access to some of the programs that they have for the liability and the commercial property issues, and we use some of them now. And then they would like potential access to our self-funded medical plan, because the medical plan is doing very well at the moment. So those, those will be determined down the road, and if the boards do decide to do some sort of a merger, then we'll have to go to the different cities and get their opinions on that. But it could be effective and much more efficient and a cost savings to the agency itself. So that's what's happening with REMF these days. We'll know further at our annual meeting in January.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Landman.
All right. I do have one thing to report, and it was kind of somewhat of a big thing, kind of a momentous occasion for the county. Last week, on October 2nd, I spoke as the Chair of the Sonoma County Transportation Authority and helped lead a groundbreaking event for the final part of Highway 101, the final Highway 101 widening project, winnowing through Petaluma there. This is finally the conclusion, a 20-year project, $75 million, roughly, more than 75 actually, mega project. And when this is done in about two, probably two and a half years and change, we'll have three lanes all the way in this county, which is something people have waited for a long time. I will repeat something I said up there. You know, typically, these events, there's lots of thanks for everybody that's worked on it, and those were certainly well-deserved, because it was a lot of head-scratching to pull all the funds together to make this happen. But I think the primary thanks probably should go to the citizens of Sonoma County, because they made the difficult decision to pass Measure M about 16 years ago, and not an easy thing to do. But what happened with that, that money allowed us to become one of the very first, what they call self-help counties, because we had some of our own money to put into roads, and we just didn't have to go asking for federal and state money. And because of that, we found ourselves in the position, for every dollar that we spent of our local money, we got $5 of federal and state money over these years, a five-to-one ratio, which is pretty darn good. I've said this, I'll say it again, I don't think you find a much better investment return anywhere than that. So I think that's a very good thing. Most important piece that's left, of course, is having our county done is important, but it doesn't work without Marin being done too. And for some years, I was concerned if the combination of political will and funds would occur to make that happen in my lifetime. But it looks like it is lined up at the moment. Marin has, is in, I believe they're in design. They have money earmarked for this, and they're planning at least, this is what they're saying, is within a few years after we complete ours, they hope to be completed. The one question mark out there, there is a legal challenge, there's a lot of their money is coming from the gas tax, and there's two lawsuits, I think, out for this. The two lawsuits, my understanding, are somewhat similar, and one was already put up, just refused by a judge. So the expectation, this is unlikely to change, so cross your fingers for that. But when both those things happen, I think we'll see, hopefully, a good give back, both in sleeping time for the public who have to commute, as well as time with their family for people who work and commute, which is an important thing. So we're glad to see that done, and I was really glad to be there. It was kind of a historic event.
That is, that's very exciting. Now, could you do the same thing for the Nevada Narrows? Do you have any of that power?
Yeah, that's the Marin part. That's, so, that's lined up in theory in a few short years. You and I may, certainly you'll likely be here and see that. So, so, but we'll all knock on wood for that. Who knows who will be here? But that's the important thing I really wanted to show. That is about, it's, nothing's certain in this world, but it's lined up pretty strongly, and the political will is there. And so that's been some work for a few years to make that happen, but it's about, it looks about as good as you can. And obviously, that's important, because we would appreciate the improvements. We'd still get a lot of benefit out of it, but really, they maximize it. You have to get the whole thing down through, through the Narrows in Nevada. Once you have that, then it becomes San Rafael's problem.
And, yeah.
And points, points south.
And hopefully, though, the planning along that same stretch doesn't turn into a planning effort to develop it, because, you know, that's what we've done through the whole Bay Area is, you know, there's been no development, you put in these highways, the development triples and quadruples between commercial and residential, and now you've got more cars coming on the road. It's just, you know, it's this chasing the tail thing, so.
If you look at what the history has been in this county and probably most other counties, a fight between development interests and interests that don't want to develop, that's gone on for half-century, and I'm happy to tell you that's going to continue to go on.
That's good to know.
Every time we do, whether it's a train coming in, or whether it's building up this freeway, yes, you'll notice the first thing we had to do about nine years ago was break ground for all the required off-ramps and side roads and accesses. And with those now, those can all access the freeway. So in theory, we have our open space in our various county green areas that are reserved that help protect against that. But yeah, that will always happen. You see it happening right now, and.
Yeah.
There's, I've got no easy answer for this one.
No, there isn't.
That will be to settle, but this, clearly, regardless if you're a big proponent of vehicles, or if you actually feel they need to go away, I would hope most of us would agree, at least for where we are right now, this freeway did need to have that improvement, and that will be a beneficial thing for everybody.
Absolutely.
And I know I do.
Absolutely. Thank you for that report. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor Skilman.
I actually do not have a lot to report out, but I did attend, since I was not here on the meeting on the 24th, an event that I went to in between the two meetings was the Memorial Flag Event on September 11th. And so that was, I was a bit tardy, but I was at least able to, there were a couple of people trying to take photos, and I was able to make sure that I took their phones and let them get in the photos with the entire group, so we had everybody lined up. It was really amazing. So that is all I have to report out.
All right. Thank you very much. The last Sonoma County Ag and Open Space meeting on September 26th was actually a brief meeting at the offices, but then a site visit to two sites that were very different sites. One is called the Dog Bane Preserve. Never heard of it. Didn't even know what Dog Bane was. And I bet there aren't too many people in here that know what Dog Bane is.
It's a poisonous plant?
It's a plant, but it's not poisonous, yes. And although, yeah, it is to cows. Maybe it is to cows, so technically, sure. But it's this little strip in the northern part of Santa Rosa, literally right off of 101. And at the end of the property, it's only three acres, it's really small, but the end of the property is a vineyard, but here's this thing that you take a little dirt road to that you would think, well, this is just garbage. I mean, it looks like nothing, literally. But here are all these plants growing up around, and I even asked, you know, one of the people, I go, so where's this Dog Bane? He's going, well, you're stepping on one of them. I was like, okay, made myself an idiot there. But apparently, it's an incredibly important plant to the Native Americans. They use the bark, the stem, which is very thin after it dries for about a year, for, not for weaving per se, but it makes this incredibly durable string. And there was a woman there who was kind of fabricating it just as we were talking, and she made this string that, I mean, it was quite impressive, it was almost like steel, it was so strong. So that was the Dog Bane Preserve. And then we went to the southern end of the county off of Petaluma Hill Road to look at what I believe, I was forgetting the name, I think it's called the Okan Property. If you know where the county park, Taylor Mountain Parking Lot is, it's pretty close to that, just a hair south towards Ronard Park, and that was an ag easement that's there. So again, you know, this is what ag and open space is about. It's about, you know, preserving the open space, but then in some cases, you know, preserving ag in the county as well. And it's been a great relationship, and they have some work that they're going to be doing on the property, so that we were looking at that as the sun was setting, so it was quite nice. Then, as I flip through more quickly, we, well, actually, there were three of us, myself, Councilmember Landman, and Councilmember Harvey, who were listening to Congressman Mike Thompson down at Redwood Cafe this morning. Neil was also in the group. It was an overflow of people, not only were there probably 40 or 50 people standing, everybody sitting, but another group of people out on the stairs outside at Redwood Cafe, so. And unbeknownst to me, I was asked if I could introduce the congressman, and it's like, yeah, really, sure, yeah, why not? And, but I, but I thank the owners of the restaurant for opening up their doors and allowing this activity, which was, it was very interesting. I will tell you just very briefly some of the topics that were covered in no particular order. PG&E, interesting, since we've been talking about that, DACA, climate change, corruption in politics, the impeachment process, Veterans Affairs, transportation, Central Valley Water, school teachers' salaries and housing, and the 2020 federal budget. So those are, I don't know if I missed anything, if you guys picked up anything else, but, and the congressman spent probably an hour and 45 minutes kind of going through all that stuff. He did just a two-minute intro of himself, and then said, I really want to just take questions from the people in here, so. And then he had cards at the end if people wanted to write. And then he had cards at the end, if people wanted to write more questions, and they would get back to them. So anyway, it was a, it was a good event all around, and I know this Saturday, I will be taking part at some level in the Oktoberfest in the downtown park. And with that, we will go on to public comment on non-action agenda items. Mr. Beric.
It's Councilman Beric. For a future agenda item, possibly, I'd like you to consider what happened here tonight regarding the audio system. I'm sitting here in the audience, and I'm enjoying the dedication to Kerry Peoples in her 30 years of service, only to see that I can't hear anything she's saying. And I know how this microphone works after 20-something years. So I took it upon myself, took kind of a leadership initiative, and I went up to the city clerk, and I whispered to Lauren, I said, I don't think this microphone is working up here. She says, okay. Did nothing about it. Now, maybe she's paralyzed, what to do? Okay, maybe she doesn't know what to do, you know, it's not my place to say, but nothing happened, so I sat down. Microphone's still not working, which means the people listening at home cannot hear Ms. Peoples. All of her friends at home and away, her college friends and family can't hear anything, making the town look really ridiculous. Can't hear what she's saying, I can't hear what she's saying. So I approached the city manager. After, when you guys got up to do your photograph, Damien came across, graciously, I said, Damien, I don't think the microphone's working. Okay, he says, okay. Comes up here, does nothing about it. Now, I, it would behoove me to sit here and just interrupt the meeting to try to get the mayor to take heed at the fact that the microphone's not working, but no, I tried to go through proper channels, doesn't work. Ms. Alderman gets up to speak, microphone doesn't work. She tells you it doesn't work. She has to sit down and refuse to participate in the system because she can't, nobody can hear her, but Mr. Landman can hear her, because it's all about Mr. Landman, isn't it, Mr. Landman? Doesn't matter that we can't hear in the audience, or the people at home can't hear, it's about that you can hear because of the proximity here and the way the sound waves are working this way. Forget the people in the back, Mr. Landman, because we know all about your ego. Here's what I'd like you to do. I'd like you to figure out who in the hell's running this meeting, who's going to take the bull by the horns when something works? What are you going to do when we're out of agendas in the back of the room? And there's people who need agendas. What are you going to do when you go to the bathroom and it's flooded or something? Who is in charge here of these meetings? We surely don't want to interrupt you, sir. You got your, you got your hands full. But who do we go to that can take an executive position and make an executive decision for the good of the meeting, since taxpayers are paying for this meeting, on trying to make us all be able to participate in the body politic? Can you just kind of sleep on that a little bit tonight and come back with, with all your brilliance, come back with a plan?
Thank you for your comments, and I do believe, I do believe we actually asked Ms. Alderman to pause so we could fix the problem. You know, this is not a one-on-one conversation between you and I, I'm just trying to say that what you stated was not 100% accurate, as usual. Ms. Alderman.
That comment was uncalled for. I witnessed him go to Damien, I witnessed him go to Lauren, and I couldn't hear, I had to refuse. That was totally uncalled for.
But we fixed it, we fixed the mic so you could come back.
You already have a civil, two civil rights suits in the federal government, and you're doing more stuff. You know, maybe it should get through your thick heads, that you shouldn't interrupt people. You were interrupting him. Civil rights, First Amendment, I can give you my case number. Anyways, future agenda items, the, you haven't dealt, I think we're small enough in this city that there needs to also be emergency plans for the disabled and the, and the seniors. Like, there's a group home that's right over by the police station, they have wheelchairs, they're stuck in emergency, they have staff, they, these certain places that should be identified and followed up on, on the police, and I think we're small enough that we could do something like that. And seniors that live alone even have buddy systems and things like that with, because older generation don't always have cellphones and all that kind of stuff, so I think we really need to add that into emergency plans. The other thing is, at the Planning Commission meeting last night, you discussed, they discussed city council rules, and there, you still have an ADA one that's against the ADA that I thought you corrected. It's in my civil lawsuit, federal lawsuit, that has to be announced that you have a disability to get accommodation, that's against the ADA. You still put it in, it's still in there as of last, so you need to, and you broke the, there's things in those rules that are against the Brown Act, those need to, like requiring your name and address for, this is the Planning Commission ones, that need to be dealt with, and they approved it, I think, because they had no sound last night. Anyway, the other thing is, of course, the homeless are coming up, and it's getting, we're going to have winter before we know it, and we need to open up the Ray Miller Community Center for the homeless during extreme weather. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seen no one, I will close the public comment. And is there any information that was received after the agenda was posted? None? Then we will adjourn at 9:19. Thank you.